Good afternoon, welcome to the March 18th, 2025 Riverhead Central School District Regular Board of Education Meeting. Can I get a roll call? Ms. Healy?
President.
Mr. Wallace?
President.
Ms. Murphy?
President.
And Ms. Freeborn? Thank you. Can I get a motion to go into Executive Session to discuss the employment of a particular personal corporation?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion passes and we'll be back at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Any last words, Mr. Abanez?
I like pie.
All for the glory, right? Mahaly? All for the glory, right?
I'm ready to roll.
What do you think, Mr. Phil? All for the glory, right?
Let's go.
This is it. Ms. Quigley?
Alright, everyone's so ready.
I'm scared.
You're scared? You look a little scared.
I am.
You're gonna be alright. You're gonna survive. What do you think?
I'm scared, I don't have a bomb.
Christine, what do you think? Would you do this 10 times in a row?
10 times in a row?
10 times in a row?
That's for your jail.
That's for your jail.
Mrs. Reed, you're a veteran of this.
Yes, I am.
What do you think? What keeps you coming back for more, Mrs. Reed?
Um, I just love to see the kids laughing and I especially like when they miss so that we can laugh at them now.
I hear you.
But I will get lit up in the face of the gods, I'm sure.
Are you gonna be tempted to throw a... How you doing there, Ms. Brazila? How you doing?
I'm excited.
I'm gonna send this to your husband so he can see you in action at your best, right here. This is your...
Oh, he thinks he could be here to pine in.
He will never say you don't work hard again.
Yup.
We have the health department here. So, what do you think? What's really healthy about this activity?
I think it really builds, you know, community and it also gets a lot of aggression out. I think it's really good for stress relief.
I hear you. Have you checked the ingredients of this whipped cream?
I really... It's actually gonna be okay?
Is it gonna be okay?
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a really good person.
Cause you're gonna eat a lot of it, just so you know.
Yeah.
Alright.
And the smell is actually really phenomenal.
Especially about a half an hour later.
Oh, that's the best part, yup.
Yeah, you will smell like you took a bath in Saw and Milk, right?
I'm very excited.
Alright.
I'm very excited.
Raul? You are really, you are really, really giving it up today. No more Hollywood. Today, today, we're gonna have to call you by another name. We're gonna have to call you West Side Story today.
Yes, sir. It's in my 2025. It's over, man.
Ms. Amy? Are you ready for this?
I'm ready, bring it on.
Alright, alright. How you doing, Ms. Jen? Are you scared?
Oh, I'm a little nervous.
You look scared. You look a little nervous.
I'm a little nervous as well.
It's gonna be a... Ms. Brittany, how you think?
I'm ready.
Are you nervous? You're red? You got that Eye of the Tiger look?
I know these kids have bad aims, so I don't know how that works.
Oh, okay, good. So, you're not worried about getting hit? I got you.
I'm not worried.
Oh wait, we got a science nerd. Just so you know, she was up at 3 o'clock this morning...
That's why I'm on.
Looking at the moon through cloud-covered skies.
With no lock.
And here's the other, Science Nerd Junior. Were you up looking at the lunar clip or the, uh, at the moon?
Uh, I tried.
Tried? What do you mean, you tried?
I did try. I couldn't see anything because it was cloudy, but I did try.
I couldn't either. I took the advice of, of your colleague...
Of Mr. Austin.
And wasted my time when I could've been sleeping.
Oh, no. Mine too.
I know. That's alright. That's alright. Science has failures too.
That's okay.
Mrs. Greenberg? Uh-oh. Mrs. Greenberg, are you ready for this?
I am ready.
You are, you are not, you are, you are undaunted by the fear before you.
I am not afraid. My show choir kids already told me they're coming for me.
They're coming? I heard that.
Love.
In fact, when your name was announced, ticket sales went up about 20%.
Absolutely.
Just so you know.
I do what I can.
Oh my God, let's go, you guys are moving. Let's go, let's go, let's go. You're going to do it? You do it. Make it.
Anthony, who do you want to hit with a pie?
Principal.
The principal, alright. Who do you want to hit with a pie? What'd she do to you? Nothing? You guys are great, I'm telling you, you're like machines.
I never want whipped cream ever again.
You never want whipped cream again? Have you tasted it? Is it any good?
I mean, it's okay.
Have you tasted it? There. Guys, what do you think about the cleanup? You can do this in five minutes, right? No problem, Arthur? 10 minutes? What do you think? Mike, you look like you're a little scared of this mess. What do you think? A big mess, that's what I think. Alright. I think we should do it tomorrow, what do you think? On Monday? How about Monday? Who do you want to hit with a pie, Bryn? Why?
Because they gave us a quiz today.
Oh. You wanna hit Mrs. Reed with a pie? Why?
Cause she told me to do better on my test.
She told you to do better on your test?
Cause she was like, it's not a test, I didn't know. It was like a review or whatever.
So, this is payback from you?
Yeah, yes.
I got it, I got it. You were like a machine. I'm telling you. Let me see. The last pie, alright.
Thank you for the amazing job. We thank, thank the Health Department, our PTO for putting this together. Miss Yan, right here, and his team. They're really, really, they're critical to what happens to you every day. So, I just wanna say thank you guys for taking a pitch. This is the after vote.
Hi, RMS. My name is Bryn and I'm the Student Government President. We want to make you aware of an important upcoming event that we want everyone to participate in. That event is our annual school climate survey.
A school climate survey is a questionnaire used to gather feedback from students to understand their perceptions of the overall school environment, including aspects like safety, student engagement, relationships between staff and students, and overall school culture. It provides valuable data for identifying areas for improvement and making informed decisions to enhance the school climate.
The purpose of a survey is to measure how different stakeholders within the school perceive the school environment and identify areas where positive changes can be made. Topics covered in this survey are demographic, demographics of the student body, physical safety, bullying and harassment, teacher support and relationships, academic engagement, school leadership, and positive school culture.
Some of the benefits of this survey is that it can help identify areas of concern within the school community, provide data to inform the school improvement plans, enables targeted interventions to address specific issues, promotes open communication and collaboration among stakeholders. Using a school climate survey to collect student feedback is an easy way of understanding what's happening in school-wide. Survey offers an important opportunity to improve school climate in ways that matter to your community to create a safe and supportive environment.
In the coming days, you will all be allowed to participate in our own RMS climate survey during your homeroom period. Just, please take just a few minutes to answer the questions and complete the survey so that we can have sufficient school-wide feedback. The student government will review and analyze the data collected and present our findings of the spring. Thank you for your participation and so long.
Welcome back to the March 18th, Riverhead Central School District Regular Board of Education Meeting. Can I have a motion to return to open session? Thank you, Ms. Freeborn. Can I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All in favor? And motion passes. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an announcement by our district clerk on translation services.
Good evening. Translation services are available if you see Ms. Kess in the back corner of the room.
Thank you. We have our student representative, Annabelle Dunn.
Good evening. At Aquabag, they launched their Buddy Program, which pairs fourth grade students with students in their self-contained classes during fourth grade recess. The Buddy Program aims to foster inclusion, build friendships, and create meaningful learning experiences for all students involved. This runs twice a month and includes various activities in the classroom designed to encourage positive social interactions and collaboration. At Riley, the students are working hard getting ready for their science fair contest and expo where all projects are due at the end of the week and will be displayed for all to view on April 3rd. Their third and fourth grade classes students have been learning about drones and have been using the simulation to get ready to fly them on their own. At Pulaski Theater Club, students have been hard at work rehearsing for their upcoming performance of Wizard of Oz, Pulaski Edition. The Quogue Wildlife Refuge will be visiting their students this Thursday. At the Middle School, they launched their annual school climate survey with a video promotion and Google Form survey. This was announced at the beginning of March during their homeroom period. Student government has also helped PTO last week with ticket sales for the Pie Day fundraiser, selling tickets for pies to throughout teachers. Over 810 tickets were sold. RMS News Club was also busy this month by creating videos for the CAP Anti-Vaping Project. They created videos for the Pride Monthly Challenge for March, which focused on rewarding students for helping someone in need. RMS News also created a video for the school administration to promote 95% attendance for March. They also created the promo videos for Pie Day, School Climate Survey, Pie Day Promo, and Highlight Video. And please let me know if you'd like to see those videos. And at the high school, we had a successful Pie Day where students were able to pie the teachers. Spring sports started yesterday and everyone's doing well. And the class of 2025 would like to thank faculty, staff, friends, and family for their generous donations towards our fundraiser.
Thank you, Annabelle. And we have our superintendent report, Ms. Posich.
Annabelle, thank you for an excellent report. I would like to give a shout-out to Riley Elementary School for their performance of Beauty and the Beast. It was incredibly delightful and the students entertained us just beautifully and a thank you to the staff for bringing that to fruition. We have a very full agenda this evening and it is, one of our favorite things is to honor our students and staff. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce our Director of Fine Arts, Jason Rotkamp.
Thank you. Hello, everyone again. Nice to see you all. So, March is Music in Our Schools Month, so I thought a nice way to celebrate that is with a little performance this evening. So, behind you is the Riverhead High School Chamber Orchestra. They're under the direction of Ms. Regan Burns. And I'll be performing a piece tonight by Katie O'Hara-Labrie and it's called Unbridled Spirit. Please enjoy.
That was extraordinarily beautiful and we thank you for that wonderful performance. So, we all had an opportunity tonight to witness the value and importance of music as part of our core curriculum. So, another round of applause for that wonderful performance.
Well, thank you very much. So, we're also very fortunate that we have so many talented students and dedicated teachers that we are here tonight to recognize some of their accomplishments over the past year. So, last week, we spoke about Hamea Middle School. Tonight, we're gonna be honoring Hamea High School, again Hampton Music Educators Association. As you know, with music, there's acronyms that come with it all the time. So, we're also gonna be honoring Nisbada, which is the New York State Band Directors' Association. We had some students make that, which is a New York State area honor band. And we're also gonna be honoring a few students that were recognized by Scala, which is the Suffolk County Art Leaders Association. So, we do have some artists here as well that received some scholarship money and awards over the past several months at some art shows. So, with that being said, we're gonna get started. And I think we're all here now. Several of our students came from the stage back here. So, I'm gonna start from the beginning. I'll also recognize, as we go along, students that may not be present so that they can be recognized as well. Okay? So, to start it off, Alexandra Accartelli, Hamea High School Band. Sam Koo Assamagan, High School Orchestra. Gavin Bernstein, High School Orchestra. Evan Carroll, High School Orchestra. Jamie Charles cannot be here tonight, but she was a recipient of the Scala All County Award. Madeline Chavez, High School Orchestra. Julia Chichurska, High School Orchestra. Cora Dalshich, High School Orchestra. The next three couldn't be here this evening, but I would like to recognize Jolie Espanda, Hilda Espanda, and Aiden Frost. All were part of the Hamea High School Band. Melissa Garcia, Hamea High School Band and the Nisbada High School Honor Band. Carly Galls, High School Orchestra. Christopher Gonzalez Washambo, Hamea High School Band and Nisbada High School Honor Band. Kathryn Gutierrez-Palicios, Hamea High School Orchestra. Liam Hart, Hamea High School Jazz Band. Evan Huber, Hamea High School Orchestra. Evan Jones couldn't be here this evening, but he was also part of the Hamea High School Jazz Band. Riley Kidney, Hamea High School Band. Eunice Kim was a recipient of the Scala Scholarship. Madison Miller, Hamea High School Band was also not able to be here this weekend. This weekend? Tonight? Did I say this weekend? I did. That happens sometimes. Where was I?
Tuesday.
Where was I? Olivia Plachot, Hamea High School Chorus. Alice Reese, Hamea High School Band. Madison Saladino, Hamea High School Orchestra. Madeline Schmidt, Hamea High School Band. Elena Schrauber, Hamea High School Orchestra and Jazz Band. Elena Schrauber, Hamea High School Orchestra and Jazz Band. Peyton Grace Scudder, Hamea High School Orchestra. Christian Seymour, Hamea High School Band and Nisbada High School Honor Band. Sarah Turner, Hamea High School Band. And then, we also had Ashwarya Turner, High School Chorus, and Lauren Zaweski, High School Band as well. Thank you very much. Thank you. My apologies. We also had one more that arrived late. Dulce Contreras as well. Sorry. Sorry. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Adkamp. And congratulations to our students. We are very proud of you. Do you want me to continue?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or you let them go. Tell them they can go home if they want to.
We will also be honoring this evening one of our student athletes. And it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Perry, our wrestling coach.
Hello, everyone. So, I wrote a little something about Miko. And that's... Sorry. That's who we're going to be honoring today. I started coaching Miko when she was in seventh grade. She came out for the boys' wrestling team. At the time, we only had one other girl on the team. I asked her if she's okay wrestling with the boys. And she said, "I wrestle with my brothers all the time. I think I'll be fine." And I know who our brothers were, so she was going to be fine. So, in middle school, it's hard for girls to get matches because I have to ask the boys if they want to wrestle the girls. And sometimes, they say yes, and then sometimes, they say no. So, this year, we were presented with a great opportunity because Section 11 recognized girls wrestling as a sanctioned sport for the first year. So, and this was a long time coming for a lot of the girls who had to wrestle on the boys' teams. So, now, they can wrestle on the all-girls' team. To build the sport, a couple of the schools have combined to make one team. We combined with the Bellport Team, which has also combined with six other teams. Miko was decided to start the season. In her first tournament, she didn't do as good as she thought that she would do. And she was really discouraged. One of the things that was really challenging for her was switching from folk-style wrestling, which is what the boys do, to freestyle wrestling, which is what the girls did this year. So, she had troubles with the rules and learning how to wrestle freestyle. Towards the middle of the season, I just saw like a switch with Miko. One story I can tell you in the beginning of the season, sorry, Miko, but she would come on the bus with a huge Arizona iced tea. And I would tell her, "You have to stop drinking the iced teas." And she's like, "Well, it's so good." And then, I stopped seeing the iced teas. I started seeing her working hard in practice. I'm not sure what really switched for her, but something changed. And then, she started really being coachable and listening to her coaches. And she started seeing a lot of success on the mat. Going into one tournament before our county tournament, Miko wrestled amazing, and she ended up winning the tournament. That gave her a lot of momentum going into the girls' county tournament. This was the first girls' county tournament ever. So, she got a lot of momentum going into that tournament. And she ended up winning the county tournament. This made Miko Foster the first-ever girls' wrestling county champion at 185. So, it's a huge deal. She will go down in history. She will go down in history as the first girl to win the county championship at 185. Miko then went on to wrestle in the first-ever girls' state tournament, which took place in Albany. She went two-and-two at the tournament. She won two matches. She lost two matches. But she wrestled really, really tough. And I was very extremely proud of her. One thing that really stuck out to me with Miko is right after the county tournament, like she came up to me and I was talking to her about like how good she did. And she said to me, she said, "I just wanted to make you proud, Coach." And that kind of meant a lot to me. And I told her that I'll tell her and I'll tell her again that you did make me proud. And not just because she won the county tournament. Because of how her season started and how she continued to get better. She didn't give up. She started dieting. She started really changing the way she went about things. And that was what I was mostly more proud of than her actually winning the tournament. Her dedication to the sport, her dedication to everything coming to practice. I don't even think she missed any practices this year. Just that dedication that she put towards wrestling really showed why she should be a county champion. And then, Miko is also part of the Bellport Wrestling Team, which was a county wrestling champion tournament. And we also won the state tournament as a team. And her two wins at the state tournament contributed to that as well. So, if Miko could come up here, and you guys can give her a round of applause. Certificate of recognition for Miko Foster. Like I said, I'm proud of you for all your accomplishments this year. And the scary thing is that you are only in ninth grade, and you have so much more to do.
Hi, everybody. I'm James Foster. I'm Miko's dad. Now, I'm referred as Miko's dad. And so are her brothers, to be honest. Miko's brothers. I'm a lifelong resident of Riverhead. Graduated in '94. It's been so amazing watching Miko and her journey. And the only thing tougher than a wrestler is public speaking. So, Miko asked me to just read a few words for her to tell everybody she's thankful. So, Miko, what I pretty much wanted to say, when I first started wrestling, I never thought I would get this far. I never thought I would get through the season. When you first start wrestling, it puts you in a mindset that no one has ever been in. When you really work hard, it could change you, and it could change your personality. It could change your attitude. It can change everything. It gives you confidence, and it gives you bravery. These are the things I needed in middle school because that is when I started wrestling, in the seventh grade. Looking back, I never thought I would go to the States as a freshman. So, everything is new to me. Being here means a lot to me and to my coaches. I've had multiple coaches in the past, but my number-one coach is Coach Perry. I've talked to him about my partners. I've talked to him about my weight. Coach Perry sticks by me all the time. And here's what I have to say. Coach Perry listens to what I have to say, which is very helpful when you're going through a lot of new things all at once. Then, there is my dad. My dad is one person who supported me and believed in me. My dad has been there by my side, no matter what. My dad has been there by my side, even when I had a match, when he was working. But he always puts me first and would skip work. Give me fired. Just to see me wrestle. There is one thing my dad has always told me, and that is, "Go out there and make history." So, Dad, I really did make history, like he taught me. This shows me how much love and care my dad has for me and my sport. So, thank you. Dad, I love you so much. And don't get me started on Everett William Foster, her brother. Please, everyone, start clapping because my brother is one who made me join wrestling. My brother is the one who got me here. He's the one who showed me my moves to continue to try out for wrestling. My brother taught me a couple of moves over the past summer, and I was like... Oh, no. Because of all the stuff I've seen him go through as a wrestler. But my brother taught me, and he kept teaching me, and I really locked in, and I actually loved it. And look now where I am. Thank you, Everett. This is the one time I'm saying thank you to my brother, so remember it. I would also love to thank you guys for giving me this award because every time I step on the mat, I think about my Aunt Dana, who recently passed. My Aunt Dana was my mom's best friend and my mom's sister. My mother would do anything, Aunt Dana, going through everything I had to go through with wrestling and everything. With my aunt, it was a lot of pressure, and I put in a lot of hard work. So, wherever I was on the mat to compete, I said to myself, "Aunt Dana is right here beside me. Let's do this for her." I would like to accept this award in honor of my Aunt Dana. Because of all the hard work is because of her. I know she would be proud of me. That's one thing I always hear in my head. And it would always get me through the toughest competitions. I would also like to thank my community and all of my family members and friends who were here tonight to see me in person. I love you, fam. Thank you so much for this award.
We're going to take a picture. Hi, we're going to take a picture. And if your brother would like to join us, that'd be great. all the support for Miko this evening. It is now my pleasure to introduce Jacqueline Kenny from Aquabog Elementary School. She is the assistant principal.
Hello, everyone. Jacqueline Kenny. It's nice to see all of you today. I'm here to recognize one of our staff members, Misty Harrison. She wasn't able to make it tonight. Something came up. But I did want to just share something incredible she did at our school. While students were arriving at school last month, she saw one of her students she's assigned to as his aide having a seizure through the bus window. They were very subtle signs that only she was aware of because of her connection to the student. She immediately ran on the bus, called for assistance, and then continued to notice very subtle post-seizure signs, which allowed us to get the immediate attention that our student needed. Unfortunately, our student wasn't able to attend tonight with his family, but his parents did write a letter they wanted to share with all of you. This is addressed to Ms. Harrison. But she says here, "As parents of a child with special needs, we always pray that our son is surrounded by people who will love and care for him in the best way possible. Sending him to school every day is never easy. Besides being a special-needs child, our son has several medical conditions that require constant attention and monitoring. The past few months have been very challenging for us, but through it all, our son remains a happy little boy. When we received the call from the school nurse telling us that our son may have had a seizure, my heart immediately dropped. However, she reassured he was okay, we rushed to pick him up and took him home to rest. This wasn't the first time our son had experienced a seizure at school or on the bus, but it was the first time that we received news that his aide, Ms. Harrison, took immediate action. From afar, she recognized that he was in trouble and quickly called for help. We are truly grateful for her vigilance and her calm response in that moment. Not only does she help our son every day, but she also truly understands him. She sees when he is struggling, when he needs attention, and when he can't express his discomfort. For that, we are beyond thankful. We are relieved and comforted knowing that our son is in her care each day. It's hard to put into words how much it means to us that she is someone who sees and understands him in a level that so many others may not. We often hear gut-wrenching stories of children with autism in school settings, but we rarely hear about the incredible staff members who make all the difference in their lives. Misty Harrison is one of those amazing people, and we are forever grateful for everything she does for our son. Thank her being there for him, not just as his aide, but as somebody who truly cares about his well-being. So, I just want to thank all of you for the support that you've offered us. In my short time overhead, I realized how much of a family this community is, and I'm so happy to be a part of it and so grateful that I can share this news with all of you. So, once again, thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. And a very special thank you to Ms. Harrison. We are so fortunate to have her on staff. I'm now pleased to introduce our assistant superintendent for business, Dr. Mary Ann Cardassano.
Okay, thank you. And welcome, everybody, to the second budget presentation of the superintendent's proposed 2025-26 budget. This is our calendar. I spoke about it last month when we met. This is the second presentation. I will note that we did add a second topic that I'm going to discuss tonight, along with the expenditure plan. I am going to take the opportunity to talk about two capital projects that we're looking to move forward to continue in the next year or two. And both of those projects have no impact on the tax rate to the community. When we last met, we discussed revenues. This is where we start in the budget process. We need to determine how much cash we will have on hand for the following year and what our revenues will be in order to determine what our expenses will be. So, where we start actually is at the state budget. And that budget increase that we're expecting is nearly $4.9 million. Also, we're expecting an additional $700,000 in state aid due to our costs in special education. You add the state aid with all of our other revenues, that's the $2 million at the bottom of that line. And then, the board's direction was that we would not exceed the property tax cap. This year, that calculation allows for taxes to increase $2.3 million. So, our tax cap will be 2.16%. Basically, what you do is you add up all of your revenues. So, that's our state aid, our miscellaneous income, our pilot payments, and our taxes. And then, that's what we develop our budget number. So, our budget number is the $211 million. That allows for a $9.9 million increase. That allows for a $9.9 million increase. So when you get through all those numbers, what it means is the maximum amount we can increase our budget for next year is $9.9 million. What does that mean as far as a percent? That's 4.95%. So let me stop with all the jargon and just break it down into some other numbers for you. What that means, based on our revenues, our budget can increase $9.9 million, 4.95%. So it means our maximum budget can be the $211,434,000. And again, that is within the 2.16% property tax cap. Now, as we've discussed over the past year and a half that I've been here, the budget is divided into five main categories. The first one, which is general support, is increasing by $400,000. That $400,000 is our facilities, our buildings and grounds, our electric bill, what it costs to run district office, our property insurance. All of that is increasing by $400,000. The next number I want you to pay special attention to is the 2,000 series. That is our instructional programs. So out of $9.9 million, $7.7 million is going directly to instructional programs within the school district. There's a $600,000 increase in transportation. That is totally attributed to our salaries for our bus drivers. And then if you look at the bottom number of the 9,000 series, that $1.1 million, that is undistributed, which is a very fancy word for benefits and bond payments. So when you add the benefits for our staff of $1 million and the 7.7, you can see that this budget is completely directed and driven towards the instructional programs in our school district. Now, I do want you to remember that $7.7 million number because I'm going to come back to that in a few minutes. So the easiest way to look at this is to see what happened in my office in November and December when we started the budget process. Knowing that our estimate could be $9.9 million, I looked at some of the higher areas where our budget was thought to be increasing. Out of the $9.9 million, $2.2 million is directly salaries to our staff. $1.5 million is benefits. $588,000 is directly attributed to our ARC Ed program. $3.8 million is directly attributed to the cost of BOSEs for special education children. And here is the other number. The charter school tuition is expected to increase, increase between $2.6 and $2.7 million next year. So I'm going to go into some detail about each of those numbers to give you some backup information. But when you add up those five numbers, just those five numbers, is nearly $11 million. Knowing we could only increase by $9.9 million, we knew we had to go back into our budget and start looking at other places. So I knew we were $1 million over budget just to start, exactly $918,000. And then I'm looking at this, Dawn, is this the right presentation by chance? Because that's not the right slide. So I'm just going to continue while Dawn checks for the real presentation because this was the draft. I'm not exactly sure what happened. So let's just pretend the number's up there. The $2.2 million number is right. The employee benefits is actually $1,495,000. ARC Ed is 588,000. Special Ed is 3.8. And unfortunately, the charter school is 2.6. That adds up to $10,888,000. And there goes my presentation. So what are you doing for Easter and spring break? Let's all talk about how amazing that performance was by the orchestra. That would be really bad. But let's see what's happening there. Can we go off the PDF that we finalized today? So Cheryl, how are the kids? They doing okay? James, congratulations on your daughter's performance tonight and her winning that award. That was pretty amazing. Anything new, Mr. Wallace? No? Ms. Healy is like, do not talk to me and do not bring it up. Okay, let's talk about that charter school in a minute. Okay, let's, let's go back while they're doing all of what we need to electronically. Remember when I said the $7.7 million increase? Out of that $7.7 million, 2.6 of that is not for students within our school district. That tuition money is going directly to the charter school. The overwhelming concern, and we're going to talk about in a minute, is that we had estimated this year's charter school bill to be $13,750,000. $13 million. It actually came in at over $14 million for this year. And next year, that is expected to go up by another $2.6 million. So it is expected, oh, look at that. That's much better. Okay, so let me just go in reverse for a second here. Were all my other numbers right? Yeah, I'm not good with numbers, so you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to correct me. Just keep me honest, you know? I, I, I'll go to 11. That is one of my favorite numbers right now. So here we are, let's go back. Here we are with the five categories of the budget. And when I said $7.7 million increase in instruction, that's because that is where the charter school tuition is budgeted. Okay? So out of that 7.7, you can take $2.6 million out of that. That's not going to our children who are in our seven buildings. All right? So the, the increase of the $400,000 is for general support. The $600,000 in transportation is for bus driver salaries. And the $1.9, $1.1 million is undistributed, which is bonds and, and budget. Okay. This is the right slide, thank you. All right. So when we're looking at the $9.9 million, my focus is where did that number, where are my big ticket numbers that I have to look at? And right off the bat, the $2.2 million in salaries. Then it was the $1.4 million in employee benefits. ARC Ed, I'm going to talk about is a $588,000 increase. Our special ed cost just in BOSEs is an increase of $3.8 million. And $2.6 million in the charter school. So literally at Thanksgiving, I was already $900,000 over budget before we began the budget process of looking at our programs. So then what happens is we need to add in other items that we need to include next year. One of those items is what I spoke about last time we met, which was the high school summer school program. So the high school summer school program years ago was budgeted in general fund. And then what happened was when COVID hit and the COVID grant monies were around for three, four years, we used those COVID grant funds to pay for our high school summer school program. Now we have to pay for it on our own. Those federal monies and those grants are gone. So we knew that was going to happen. So now we have to really determine how can we afford to put summer school back? So now it was where are our natural increases? Gas, electric, salaries, benefits. All right? If something goes in the budget, another number has to come out because we're not going to pierce the cap and we have to live within our means. Okay? So I'm going to take each one of these numbers one at a time. All right? Out of the $2.2 million increase in salaries, all right, there is a reduction in administrative salaries of nearly a quarter million dollars, of $223,000 of administrative salaries that will be decreased next year. There is an increase in faculty or instructional salaries of $615,000. And I will tell you, that number should be tripled. The reason it's not is because last month, the board approved and we're working in partnership with RCFA on a retirement incentive. And that is why that number is lower than what we had originally anticipated. The large part of that increase of $2.2 million is $1.9 million increase in support staff. Now, we've been working on this for more than a year. We've been working with CSCA, our teacher assistants and our teacher aides and their contract negotiations. So out of $2.2 million, nearly $2 million is going to the support staff. We spoke about employee benefits last month. That's an increase of nearly $1.5 million. With the increase in support staff salaries comes a dramatic increase in ERS, which is their retirement system, which is directly connected to the amount of money that they're paid. Their percentage is associated and now there's a $400,000, a $400,000 increase or 14%. It's a pretty big number. But we're thankful, as I said last, last time we met, I've never said before that I'm thankful that health insurance only went up by a couple, one or two or three percent. And it's not a double digit increase and we're grateful for that this year. But out of the $9.9 million increase, $1.5 million is going for benefits. Now I'll spend some time talking about occupational education. As an administrative staff in the Board of Education, we are very supportive of ARC Ed. There is no doubt about that. We have supported that for decades. But we need to take a closer look at this and maybe do a little bit of reevaluation and let me show you why. It is over a half million dollars, nearly a $600,000 increase from last year to this year to run our ARC Ed program. The tuition rate has not exceeded even the cost of living. What is happening is if you look in the 2019, 2020 year, we sent 140 students to BOSEs for ARC Ed. That was great. The tuition was nearly $14,000. Your budget supported by $1.9 million. It's not a small number. If you look at recent years, in the 2021 year coming out of COVID, we jumped from 140 to 178, 175, 222, 220, 229, and I've budgeted 224 students for next year. That is almost doubling in, in five years. Your student count and your budget count. So now we've gone from a $1.9 million increase to this current year, which is just tipping over $3 million. And with the projected increase in tuition from $15,500 to $16,000, next year's budget is nearly $3.6 million. That is a big jump from 1.9. So we are working with our guidance department and we'll see where that brings us. But you know, we have a reasonable tuition rate and a, and a high student count. So that's $600,000. Now talk about BOSE Special Ed. The, the special ed budget, one line, which is the BOSEs line, is increasing $3.8 million. The overall increase for special ed is well above that. But when you look at that BOSEs line, which we did a very deep dive into, we are facing an increase in mandated services, an increase in enrollment of special education children from within our current students as well as new entrants. The overwhelming issue is that we do not have space for these placements. Excuse me. We do not have the physical space for these classes to be housed within our elementary schools specifically. So therefore, there is no choice but to have these students attend school out of district. So instead of having an 811 or a 1211 or a 1511 here with one teacher and an aide and a TA and appropriate supports, they, they will probably go to BOSEs at a cost of X number of dollars per student. So that's a very, very big problem that we have faced the past two years. This year was the tipping point. And I will say, we have looked at every building. You have libraries that have been divided. You have staff that's doubled and tripled into room, one room. So very honestly, your physical space here is now driving your budget tuition rates up. And then the next topic, charter schools. So this is the exact slide from last year for, when I was doing this budget presentation for 2425. And we estimated where that arrow is, that we would need $13,750,000 for charter school. It is a huge number. And when I stood here and said, over eight years, you will pay nearly $71 million in charter school tuition. I know that you've taken a good look at this. I'm going to take another look at it. Because now that $13 million is now $14,356,000 for this year. We are sending an additional $600,000 to the charter school for tuition payments. The cost this year for every charter school student is $21,746. If that's not astounding to you, look at next year's tuition rate. That tuition rate for 2526 is set by the state. We have no choice. We have to pay that rate. If we don't pay that rate, they take the money out of, out of our state aid and they send it to the charter school. So when you are looking at a per student rate of $24,053 with a projected enrollment of 679 students, next year's charter school payment will be $16.5 million. That is an increase of somewhere between $2.6 and $2.7 million. And now in nine years, you will have paid $88 million to the charter school to educate our resident students. You basically could have built a building for that kind of money. So I know we're going to be talking about that a lot in the next couple of months. Okay? So how do I bring this into one slide that if you were not looking at anything else that I discussed today and said, put this in a snapshot for me, Dr. Cardassano? This is what I would show you. I would show you that we're paying $88 million in salaries and $44 million in employee benefits. That's the $2.2 million increase and the $1.5 million increase in benefits. So basically, we're looking at $3.7 million. We're looking at the increase in contractual. We're looking at the increase in BOSEs. That BOSEs line of $4.4 million, that's special in ARC Ed, right there. So altogether, we're looking at $9.9 million increase or a budget presentation of 4.95%. So as doom and gloom as I've just sounded, there is some positivity here. Okay? For the most part, the programs that we're running this year will run next year. You know, we are looking to maintain positive relationships with our unions and our workforce and continue to offer the programs that we do for all of your Riverhead students, both elementary and secondary. What I do want to spend just a minute or two to talk to you about are some proposed capital projects because we need to start to address our buildings, our schools and our infrastructure. All right? How do we do that at no cost to the taxpayer? So the first three projects that I brought to the board were at no cost to the taxpayer. The first one is an energy performance contract. So what does that mean? It means that we can do projects that are energy related, whether it is solar, whether it is lighting, whether it is improving our HVAC systems. And you pay for the projects out of this energy savings that will be achieved. So it is required by law that the energy savings pay for the projects themselves. It is required that there is no impact to the tax, the taxpayer or the tax rate. The EPC and the projects need to be approved by the state. We've been working on this project probably shortly after I, after I arrived here. It's been about a year in process. An actual RFP was An actual RFP was issued in February. We opened those proposals in March after holding vendor conferences and walkthroughs. We're in the process of reviewing those projects right now. And I anticipate being back at the board to have this conversation with a presentation and looking for your approval in April. So that once we have the board approval, we will then go through the state process to have the projects approved the same way we would do for a bond issue. The difference is, there's no impact onto the tax rate. So that is a great place to start, paying attention to your building repairs that need to happen, and to start to do this by taking smaller bites of the apple rather than one large project. In addition to that, what I'm proposing to the board is we do our two kitchen renovations that are necessary. And I'm looking to recommend renovations at Riley Avenue and Phillips Avenue Elementary Schools. Again, these projects will have no impact on the tax rate. The funding will come completely from the reserve fund and from the capital fund balance. The projects do have to be presented to the voters in May for approval. And I will say that your history has been that the bond issues to support the cafeteria program have always been, you know, very, achieved a great amount of support, let me say, from your community. The projects will be sent to the state education department. They will have to go through the planning process with district architects, and I plan to be back to you in April with some more details. But I do want to just put out a little bit of that information now. At Riley Avenue, what we're looking to do is extend a serving line there, which is desperate to be done. We designed the storage space. We're looking for a new refrigerator freezer, and that's one of those huge, you know, professional-grade refrigerator freezers for the area and to modify the staff work area. That project is about $1.2 million, fully funded from the cafeteria program. Over at Phillips, they need a little bit more work. And the project also will extend the serving line for our students. We designed the storage space. We relocate the sink and the other appliances. Again, a new walk-in freezer and refrigerator. Modify the staff work area and install additional prep tables for the staff. That's about $1.7 million. So the budget packets are available. They've been available since March 5th as a trustee to run for the board. The deadline to submit them is April 21st. The budget hearing is scheduled for May 6th. I do want to correct myself. The last time we were here, I said that the budget hearing was going to be at the high school. It is actually here at the middle school, because all of our meetings are here, and that's at 7:00. The annual statewide vote and trustee election is on May 20th. Again, I'm going to remind everybody that we are back to one location for the budget vote, which is here at the high school. We have been voting here. Then we moved to the four elementaries. We're coming back here for safety, security, and for some more efficiencies. So we will be back here on the 20th from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Lastly, this budget presentation, we will make sure the right budget presentation is online. I did proof that this morning. It is right on that budget webpage that has all the documentation. Tonight's presentation has been posted. And tomorrow, I will be posting separately the two slides for the charter school, but I think that's really important to pull out of this presentation so it's easily accessible if somebody wants to take a look at that information. Okay, so any questions? That was a lot, I'm sorry, I tried to go fast. Any questions from the board? I know that you received this presentation, and you have your budget books with the detail.
No, when I went through the line, and I think you brought it up, because if you look at the instruction for 2110, there's a total increase of 2.79, 2.89, 2.6 going to the charter, which is, I guess, there's some more students, but not a lot. It's really the tuition costs going up. And that tuition amount, if I understand the formula. So for us, we're getting charged 24,000 plus. Another school district, depending on their annual operating expenses over the three-year rolling period, could be lower, could be higher, but it's lower in, say, Woodford or Longwood. And with that increase, Special Ed costs to BOCES, that's captured by the charter. So when our BOCES costs go up because we don't have the space where some of the other school districts like Longwood and Woodford have created space so they can house 811, 1211. I mean, I know when I first got on the board, that was one thing we did over at Phillips. We did an 811 classroom, but then we ran out of space. It's, you know, a classroom for just, the 811, I mean, we needed room for gen ed. So it's actually, like, the situation that we're in is only making things more difficult for us.
Correct. And what's happening is, one issue is affecting the next one. So because you don't have space, you have to send students to BOCES or cross-contract with another school district who has space for your children or for your children and our students to go there for the program. And when that happens, then that budget goes up, which means the charter school budget goes up. And so you are on this cycle and on this hamster, you know, wheel that's just going around that we slowed down in the past 18 months. And I think, you know, paying attention to all of these numbers specifically and how they interrelate with each other is very important in your financial plan. And I know that space is an issue here, and, you know, it's a sensitive topic. But these are your students who are here and that need the space. And so until that's corrected, this cycle is going to continue. But you have 25% of your increase is not going to our students.
No, and also capturing those. So those are students that we're not even educating, that are, they're going to BOCES. And you can even look at the contract, the amount, but that the charter school is actually capturing that amount. And that's in those formulas. We've been going to the state to look at that formula. If you were to tuition in a gen ed student in this district, it'd be like $10,500. All these numbers are online, all the formulas are online. If you were to tuition in a Special Ed student, it'd be $43,000. So that they're capturing that full amount. And they have, they're supposed to be educating Special Ed students there, which they do, you know, but consulting teachers, consulting teachers type, resource rooms, so forth. But they should be, you know, helping out with the special education costs for how much that they're capturing.
And I want to just add something else to that, because you're exactly right in what you're saying. When I'm talking about the tuition, I am only referring to the tuition. On top of that are transportation costs. On top of that is our textbook costs. And on top of that is our nursing services. So I'm just budgeting on two different lines. There's a line that says tuition gen ed and tuition Special Ed is the $16 million. If we add it up for next year, how much money do we spend on transportation? They're a private school with public money, we get that. We have to transport those students. And there's nearly 700 of them. It's multiple bus routes, obviously, at multiple times. And then add in the textbook cost, that, you know, and then add in the nursing services that we're required to provide. We are well over $16,000, $17,000, $18,000 per year. It's almost like when you think about, should you rent or buy a home? Because once we pay that tuition, that money's gone, rather than investing that money in ourselves.
You know, I want to point something else out. First of all, it's a 2.16% tax levy.
Right, the tax levy is not the problem.
But also, people see the budget increase of almost 5%. They think that's what the tax levy is.
No.
It's not. Also, you know, we're educating in-house around $5,400. But this budget is actually including
That's $700.
$600 or so charter, as well as the jail, whoever we have to be educating, that's in there, as well as other out-of-district placements that we have in addition to the transportation textbooks and so forth of anybody's going to private school.
So when you're going to look at the basket of children that we educate, Riverhead is very unique. We have our students that are within our walls. We have those that are in a charter school, which is exorbitant compared to other school districts. You have your private and parochial students who we transport to their schools. And, you know, and then I mentioned gelled ed, which got a lot of airtime after I mentioned that, that, you know, the jail is within our footprint, and we are required to educate those clients by, because they're residents within our footprint. They're not permanent residents, but they're temporary residents. There are times that we can build back those individuals' homeschool district, depending on their age and when they became incarcerated. That in itself is a huge program. It's nearly 1.6 or, off the top of my head,
1.6, yeah.
Okay, nearly 1.6 million dollars. The good news about that is we do receive aid back on that. So it's not just a number that goes out and there's no corresponding revenue. So we do receive revenue by that. We are very grateful to Eastern Suffolk BOCES, who runs that program for us, because they run everything from elementary age reading programs to some folks all the way up to our high school program. So BOCES handles that for us, and we partner with them, we do what's necessary. But there's only one of the school district that has to do that, and that's East Meadow for the Nassau County Jail. So when I got here, I was like, "Can you tell me how we do jail ed?" Because there's only two people on Long Island that have to, you know, wrestle with that. So in our basket of students, it's also the students who attend through Timothy Hill Ranch. So there are a lot of nuances that have to do with Riverhead School District tuition, without a doubt. But in that, all of that, we do have a near 5% increase. We are not piercing the cap. I believe when we look back on my presentation last month, last year, the taxes were increased by over 3 and a half, just about 3 and 1/2%, I think it was 3.4, I have a lot of numbers in my head right now. But this year, it's 2.16. So we have to wrestle with that. If that's what the tax cap is, that's what we need to spend. It's not an open-ended checkbook. We have to learn to live within our means. So, but that's what this looks like. And that's why nobody invites me over for coffee. People look down when I walk, when I see them in Starbucks. So if there's no other questions, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Cardassano, that was excellent.
Thank you, Dr. Cardassano. Moving on, do we have any public comments on any of the agenda items? Do we have any online? No? Seeing no comments, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda? Thank you, Ms. Murphy, can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Freeborn. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? And the motion passes. Moving on to new business. Letter A, so this is for the approval of the cafeteria proposition that will be on the ballot for May 20th, 2025 at the annual district budget and board of education vote at the high school. This is the one that Dr. Cardassano was just talking about for the improvements for Phillips Avenue, Riley Avenue. Can I get a motion to accept? Thank you, Mr. Wallace, second? Thank you, Ms. Healy. Any questions or comments? All in favor? And the motion passes. Letter B, this is approval for the legal notice for the May 20th, 2025 annual budget vote that, as we said, will be at the high school. And, I'm sorry, no, for the budget hearing also, which will be Tuesday, May 6, 7:00 PM, which will be right here at the middle school. The budget vote will be on the 8/20th at the high school, just to clear any confusion for anyone. Any, can I get a motion? Thank you, Ms. Murphy, can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Freeborn, any questions, comments? All in favor? And the motion passes. Letter C, this is approval of an MOA with RAA, the Riverhead Administrators Association, for a retirement incentive. Can I get a motion? Thank you, Mr. Wallace, a second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy, any questions or comments? All in favor? And the motion passes. Letter D, this is accepting a mini-grant. This is a grant from the New York Future Farmers Association, which is administered by New York State Agricultural Education Outreach Program through Cornell University. The grant will provide $1,300 for use during the 2425 school year to purchase materials for the agricultural science program at the high school. Can I get a motion to accept? Thank you, Ms. Freeborn, a second? Thank you, Ms. Healy, any questions, comments? All in favor? And the motion passes. Letter E, this is approval of a 2526 cooperative bidding program. There's two of them. Number one is with BOCES for Eastern Suffolk BOCES Services, and the second one is with Clarkstown Central School District for various supplies, service materials, and equipment. Can I get a motion? Thank you, Ms. Murphy, a second? Thank you, Mr. Wallace, questions, comments? All in favor? And the motion passes. Letter F, approval of field trips. We have four field trips. The first one is for some of our varsity boys golf athletes to attend the NYSPHSA championship at Mill Creek Golf Course in Rochester, New York from June 6th through June 9th at an approximate cost to the district of $1,902. The second one is for a field trip for some of our varsity girls golf athletes to attend NYSPHSA championships at Wildwood Country Club in Rush, New York from June 6th through June 9th at an approximate cost of the same $1,902. The third is a field trip for AP Physics C and Principles of Engineering students to attend the Six Flags Great Adventure Physics Day on Friday, May 2nd at an approximate cost of $3,005, if they have an extra seat. I'm in. And number four is, it's an update from a previously approved field trip for some of our varsity girls spring track to travel to the University of Pennsylvania in Philadelphia to compete in the Penn Relays on April 25th and 26th. The previous approval included the varsity boys spring track, and the updated cost of the district is approximately $1,335. Can I get a motion to accept? Thank you, Ms. Murphy, a second? Thank you, Ms. Freeborn, any questions, comments? Good luck to all our athletes, yes, and the physics students. All in favor? And the motion passes. Do we have any committee reports? Okay, Ms. Rippon.
Oh, there we go. We, I have notes from the audit committee held on March 4th, 2025 at the Riverhead Middle School Library. The committee members present were Virginia Healy, Chairperson and Board of Education Vice President Erica Murphy, Board of Education Trustee, myself, Shao Pettisich, interim Superintendent of Schools, Mary Ann Cardassano, interim Assistant Superintendent for Business, Don Bazahaski, District Clerk, and Joseph Craco, District Treasurer. Let me just scroll down. At the most recent audit committee meeting, several key updates were provided. First, the Office of State Comptroller's fiscal stress monitoring results were discussed. The Riverhead Central School District received a no designation for fiscal stress, which is a positive outcome. In terms of environmental stress, the district's status improved from susceptible environmental stress in 2021 to moderate environmental stress in 2024. This category reflects factors like poverty, homeownership, and unemployment, issues the district cannot directly control. The Board of Education approved the June 2024 federal single audit in February 2025. The District Treasurer Joe ensured all filings were completed ahead of the March 1st deadline. And the federal single audit is now posted on the district's website. A corrective action plan was filed due to missing employee certifications related to grant funding. Looking ahead, pre-audit testing is scheduled for May and June 2025 with a full audit schedule for August 2025. Regarding the internal audit, the extra-class cycle review is approximately 80% complete, while the payroll cycle review is about 65% finished. The committee also received an update on the comptroller audit. The auditors are currently reviewing employee retirement system, reporting specifically how the district reports part-time employees. A recommendation was made to reaffirm the standard workday hours, the annual reorganization meeting in July. The comptroller's audit report is expected to be released in June 2025. The district also received its Moody's Annual Issuer Report, maintaining its AA2 rating, which impacts its tax anticipation note, also known as TAN borrowing. The federal and state audit of the Educational Stabilization Fund reporting was complete and filed ahead of schedule on March 4th, 2025, with the tax cap filing also completed by February 27th, 2025. The monitoring survey for the ESF is due later this month. Finally, the district provided an update on the Envision software implementation. Finally, the district provided an update on the Envision software implementation. The migration of WinCap to the district's internal servers has been completed, which ensures better data control that facilitates a smoother transition to Envision. Staff training for the new system begins on March 6th. The district plans to run Envision parallel from WinCap to ensure redundancy and seamless transition. The next audit committee meeting is scheduled for May 6th, 2025.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Freeborn. Do we have any board member remarks?
Just wanted to thank Riley Avenue for having me and Kelly at there, and Cheryl was there to watch the kids do the rendition of Beauty and the Beast Junior, I think it was. It was excellent. My kids and I had a great time, and I would say bravo to all the actors and actresses.
We, they will be doing one or two performances for us from Beauty and the Beast on April 9th.
Thank you. We have any other board member remarks? Do we have an opportunity for RCFA? Any remarks?
Hello, how are you? So I'm not very good with numbers either, but I was doing some back-of-the-napkin calculations. Forgive me one second. I left something. So what is the percentage increase this year for the charter school project? Is it 13%? It's about 13%. So, and I know inflation's high, but what is that, like four times the rate of inflation, roughly? All right. So you said that our budget is increasing by $9.9 million. So 27% of our budget increase is attributed to the charter school. And then our instructional increase, that 2,000 line is 7.7? So that means 35% of our instructional increase is attributed to the charter school. So, all right, so that's a 13% increase in tuition. It's 35% of our instructional increase. It's 27% of our budget increase. And then our state aid increase was 4.9 million. So that's 55% of our state aid increase. So over half of our state aid increase is a, so essentially, we didn't really get an increase in state aid of 4.9. We got an increase of, what's 4.9 minus 2.7? It's really our state aid increase is 2.2, right? In real numbers. So we didn't get an increase in 4.9 because we forfeited 2.7 of that right off the bat. Is that accurate statement? Okay. I, you know, I just check in. So there's just one other thing I'd like to say, and I just have to bring this up because I don't have it committed to memory. So you had that little sheet there with, you know, all the years of what we have paid in charter school tuition. And the charter school board is not elected by the public. The super, you know, I think the president of the charter school board is actually a resident of Los Angeles, California, if I remember, right? So, and we don't vote on their budget. So we have people that don't live in this community, have no connection to this community. I mean, if you're living in Los Angeles, California, I don't know what interest you have in, in a school district in Riverhead. They're making decisions about our community's tax dollars with no input from us. So that would, that's pretty much what it is, right? So I went on the SED website, and in 2021, 2021, 2022 school year, we paid the Riverhead Charter School $8.8 million. So, and if you look at your little chart, you know, the tuition was $18,341 per student. But if you go on the website, the state ed website on their financial disclosure page, the charter school only spent $14,659 per pupil. So that's a difference of $3,682 per student. So why are we getting, and this is rhetorical, because I know you can't, you know, it's a formula, but how is it legal that we are paying? How is it legal that they didn't spend $3,682 per student that we gave them? But if you multiply the number of students by 3,682, that's $1.27 million of Riverhead taxpayer money that's completely unaccounted for. And that's one year. I, you know, the charter school's here. It is what it is. The charter school is here. But they're not spending all of our money that we're giving them. I don't know. I, you, you read the newspaper, the local media, you know, the articles on the IDA and the articles on the town and the, and the articles on the school district. They hold you guys super accountable. Like, we have two media outlets, and if something happens, it is in the media within a moment's notice, and Riverhead, I'm sorry, News 12 is knocking at our door. You know, if, if the press's job is to educate the public, why is there nothing about this in our local media? It's our money. As a taxpayer, I'm being robbed to the tune of $1.27 million in just one year. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Do we have any comments from RAA?
RAA yields their time tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments? Do we have any online public comments? No? Okay. Seeing none, can I get a motion? We're going to go back into executive session to discuss the, to discuss the, oh, thank you. Thank you, employment contract with a particular personal corporation. I didn't sleep very much last night. And we're going to adjourn the meeting from executive session as we, we're not to be taking any more action tonight. So we're going to adjourn the meeting from executive session. I get a motion to go into executive. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. A second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All in favor? And the motion passes. Thank you. We'll see everyone again at our next meeting in two weeks.